Have A, B, and C in it. So, we had to rewrite the ordinance now to take, and Linda did this, take exactly what we already approved for A and B, exactly that to the, to the semicolon, and add C to it, so that we don't inadvertently change something. So, that's what that did. Okay? So, that's what all the appendices are, and I've scripted them here for you, all the exhibits, if you want to see them. Now, one exhibit in here, which is really kinda cool, is that one of the exhibits is, um, this high-tech drawing by the Mayor Pro-Tam, which is our.
It's very low-tech. It's a pencil and a ruler and...
Which is in there, and then here's our wonderful... Use the rule, okay, there you go.
And an eraser.
There you go. So, all of the exhibits are in here, so one of the things that I articulated, that I don't know if you understand, is that that's good enough to know what we want. So, Land Plan knows what we want, School Board doesn't care, we know what we want, it's good enough to have a meeting of the minds, which is good enough to get the swap done, get the annexation done. Well, that is happening over the course of the next month. We will then be actually coming up with engineered drawings, and engineered cost estimates, and in the future, in a couple of months, we're gonna come back and amend this to put the new stuff in. And Daryl Diagram will, will leave.
Looks like engineering to me.
Yeah, so, so...
If they can go into Lakewood Village, our time.
We are gonna come back, so I want you to make sure I understand, we're gonna come, we have to. So, in the intervening two months, if, if, if Andy says, "I want you to add three sentences in over there," we're gonna do it then. But the objective of this is to get ninety-nine percent of the way there, enough where we can get the exchange done, and get the annexation done. Once it's in our city, if Andy and Land Plan attorneys, if, if they wanna go back and forth over semicolon, I don't care. It's in the city, it's got zoning on it, we're, we're safe. We're safe. Then it's just Land Plan and them doodle-dicking around to try and reach some point where they're happy. Okay? So, so if you read through this closely, and there was something, you know, I don't wanna change it, but it's something, I do wanna go over, I do want to go over the improvement list. Basically, the thing that we were agreeing to, um, what we were agreeing to as far as the fee waivers, 'cause I added a few things in there. I wanna make sure you guys have seen it. Okay? What I tried to do with them is, um, I tried to update the, the cost numbers. I got a couple estimates from Todd, and I told Land Plan that if anything, I'm gonna err on the side of being at high, because I don't want you to think you got a blank check, and we're just gonna make up numbers and make you spend a lot of money. I'm gonna give you the best numbers I can for now, and then, we're gonna spend the next couple of months getting better numbers, and then we'll come back and revise it. So, this is the idea, to put everything we can think of in there. So, we have, obviously, the traffic signal, I think that's a pretty good number. Uh, the town entry feature wasn't two fifty, I upped it to four hundred. Like, Daryl, we talked about that, that was...
It was on the high end of his initial, uh, sort of...
Yeah, I think Serena, you were involved, we, I think two fifty was probably a little low.
Yeah, I think he said around three fifty, without really diving deep, which he will.
Right. So, I think that's a good number. Um, Doug made some numbers for the, uh, oversized water line. Um, the construction of the Parkwood wastewater line, that cost is likely to be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so. And what I told him is, in order to keep the cost down, um, we would probably be able to, we would pay for part of that, because that fifteen inches is for everybody. So, later, when their impact fees come in, we'll reimburse ourselves. We'll play banker for part, 'cause part of that fifteen inches is for guys haven't appeared yet. So, we'll play banker, I think that's fair. Um, and, but you're gonna pay a big chunk of it. And he could come back and we could waffle on that number. But I think that's, we'll get reimbursed ultimately in the end, so I'm not worried about that. Um, the, uh, the wa, the reason the oversizing is, is because where Woodcrest is right now today, Land Plan is gonna run a water and sewer line west, for the westward people that hopefully will show up. They've gotta tie in somewhere, so Land Plan's gonna stub out bigger lines than they need, so they have to get credit for that. That's fair. Um, Melody Lane, we talked about that, they're gonna extend Melody Lane down there. Um, our thoroughfare plan calls for only two lanes, they're getting Lakewood Village. We have four, so fair's fair, and they agreed, I agreed, fair's fair. Um, you know, we want four, and that's the estimate they, they gave for about a hundred and fifty feet of concrete, two lanes, roughly, uh, uh, the shores, entry signage, my request for them was that, uh, if they're gonna have, uh, signs for the, uh, whatever their things are, the hills and the valleys and the mountains of Land Plan, then the new entrance to the shores is off Lakewood Village Drive, I want that to match. I also want, in the future, there to be another one for the village, but I don't know where to put it. So, I want this to be the village, I want it to look like we're a master planned community, like, we know what we're doing. You know? That's, that's kinda what I want it to look like, that's, you know, because remember, people are gonna come down that main drive, and the other thing we're probably gonna do is, is I can see us at some point putting something which says, you know, "The plains is that way, the shores is this way, the village is that way," you know, maybe. Land Plan made you that, I don't know. You know, some sort of directional signage, but, um, I put that in, they, they came back and said...
New York.
Exactly.
The city on the top of Mount Everest.
Exactly, you got it, yes.
Might make that line more generic, and just say signage or something like that.
Maybe. Yeah, yeah, so, so the one, so that's not, those kinda directional signs are on them, that's not even in here.
Yeah, well, I think it said shores.
Well, that's, what, that's the entry feature, so like, they're gonna have those, I don't know, whatever they, whatever they're gonna put in, like the, the headstones, the, the...
Yeah, that didn't mind me.
The, the, yeah, the monument, that's a monument, that should say monument, but it's the monument for the shores. We're gonna ban the one that's on High Ridge, that, that, that wall with the ironworks, 'cause that's not gonna be the entry portal anymore. So, whatever monuments they come up with, they're just gonna put another monument for the shores. Okay? The other one is the recycled water, um, if, if we're gonna lay the Parkwood line, it's logical, you put the recycled line in the same ditch. Whether we send it the rest of the way, we'll deal with that later, but for now, we gotta get it under High Ridge with that sewer line, and then we'll figure out how to get it up to the entrance or whatever. So, I put that in, I just ballparked it at about ten thousand.
The recycled line in the same, same ditch as the sewer line?
Yes.
I, I can't remember if, if that was allowed, or if it has to be so many inches away or feet away?
It, you, you wanna put it, well...
Sewer or water?
I can't remember.
I know, because it's, because it's non-potable, you can't drink it, it's not the same kind. If it was a water line, they gotta be like six feet of separation, between water and sewer.
You have the recycled water, I thought there was a restriction.
We are gonna prob, well, because the gravel line is deep, when they fill it in, they'll just put it on top of them.
That's right.
Yes, it'll be a couple of feet away, that's what the lane's literally on top of, but it'll be in the same big trench, it'll be in there. Um, 'cause that's when you do it, and, 'cause we're gonna have to bore under all those driveways on Parkwood. The other thing that makes that, that, uh...
Is the water line on opposite side?
The, as you, as you look, as you stand on High Ridge, sewer line's on the right.
Okay, on Parkwood?
On Parkwood. Sewer line's on the right.
And then the, the...
Water's on the other side.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's on the other side of the street. The problem with Parkwood, when we do the sewer line, it's not the houses that are on the right-hand side, it's the fact that everybody on the other side of the street, all their sewer taps have to be redone. So, that's gonna be the tricky thing, is trying to get their stuff tied in, tie them back in. So, it, it's, it's a complicated job, that, that sewer line replacement, that's why it's so expensive. Um, and also, they're digging so deep, you gotta have ditch boxes, you gotta trench safety, they're, they're, they're not climbing a hole twelve feet deep. So, it, it's a, it's a, it's a big job. But this, so this is our wish list that we came up with, with preliminary estimates, and the way that it would work then is, let's say that, let's say that for, for purposes, those are the final numbers. If those are the final numbers, then our impact fees right now require ninety-five hundred per house. So, we're not gonna waive eighty percent of every single impact fee for every house, it'll drive me nuts in this office. So, what they wanna do, which makes sense, is if the, if the cost is nine ninety, and we get ninety-five hundred per house, then that's a hundred and four houses. So, the first hundred and four to come in, you don't pay us anything. You pay the building permits, the tax fees, but you don't pay any impact fees. So, we don't have to escrow it for however many years that takes to get to a hundred and four, we just don't get it. After a hundred and four, then they start paying, and that goes into a separate account, and the first thing we'll do with that money is reimburse ourselves for that water line out front, that twelve-inch main we did, we'll reimburse us for that, we'll reimburse us for some of the other things we've done when it comes in, so it'll go right into our hands. Okay? That's, that's the, that's the way it'll work. Now, if we have a one-inch water meter, which the half acres may have, then that, that, uh, impact fee is actually bigger. So, that impact fee is sixteen thousand instead of, just for the water alone. So, one-inch meter, the impact fee is two and a half times as much. So, that means if those half acres, if they put in a one-inch meter, then they're gonna have to give us ten thousand dollars when they submit their building permit, to upsize the water meter. So, that's how we're gonna handle the fee, the fee waiver. Um, just some, just some, so what are the issues that we've got hung up on? I think I've got it figured out, I've got it finalized, we'll, we'll have some minor wording changes next time, is that Land Plan asked for a three-year steady period. So, there's, the, next, a city council goes to committee a year from now and say, "We're gonna adopt new building codes, and you gotta wrap your house in bubble wrap," or whatever. So, Land Plan wants it to be stable, which, fine, we're not gonna change the ordinances any, I see no reason for us to change the building codes right now. Um, it's a lot of work, Clint usually does it, he spends a ton of time on it. Where are the twelves now? I think...
Where are twelves? I've been actually chipping away on the eighteens, but got hung up on a pool changes.
Yeah, so, uh, it's a lot of work, and so right now, we're just gonna kinda hold back, um, on that. The other issue that Andy, why they got hung up on was, um, Andy is trying to put language in that says, "Our building codes apply, no matter what any of the wackos in the legislature do." As you know, they took out the building codes last time in two thousand nineteen. So, what this says in here is, it says, "You have, no matter what the legislature has done or done in the past, whatever we worked before they did it, you gotta do that." So, we've rolled it back. So, basically, you agree to not look at what the legislature did and do what we say. And Andy's put that in there, that you gotta do that for forty-five years.
Forty-five years?
You gotta agree to do whatever we say and not the legislature for forty-five years.
So, they're gonna have it built out in three, six years?
Well, but that's, that's why they got hung up, because Doug thought that our codes, our, our codes that are locked in now, all the ordinances apply for the next forty-five years. Said, "No, I don't want the fee ordinance of twenty nineteen to apply for forty-five years."
Seems too excessive anyway.
Why? Forty-five years? The reason why forty, forty-five years is a deed restriction. He's telling them you gotta put it in the deed, and it's a deed restriction for forty-five years.
Building wiped out by a tornado, and they have to rebuild it or something?
So, it, it, so they're trying to accomplish the same, they're trying to accomplish two different things, but they're trying to do it in the same paragraph. And it took me a while, because they kept changing each other, kept reversing each other, so...
Building materials are gonna improve in forty-five years, so...
So, we're gonna reword that, but they both now understand the hang-up, they, they understand they were both trying to do the wrong, what they both are trying to do, we agree to. We agree that moving forward, we want you to do what we say and disregard the legislature. That's what we want you to do.
Until like it's building or something like that.
And, and Doug, we also agree that we're not gonna change our building codes for the next three years, so whenever you start building, you can finish building, why don't you do it in three years?
That I understand completely.
So, so...
So, if we put, if they put that in the developer agreement, that can override a legislature?
Yeah, yeah, it'll override, we can agree to any of it. The contract. The contract. Now, the, the, the protection we have, which Andy finally understands, is that on top of this, Land Plan has a, a builder agreement with the builder. So, if they hire, for example, Darling Homes, remember, Land Plan has this log that says, "Here are the window manufacturers you have to use, you must have these nineteen features on the outside, here's the list of brick you must use." They make the builds, Land Plan makes the builder do that. So, I already talked about it to Doug, put in there the masonry requirement, put in there, you know, the same thing, so it's a double layer, that even if we do something and we screw it up, they also have it with the builder, and that's, that's contract between them. Um, so, even though we're not a party to that, Land Plan is, and they also want masonry and, you know, they don't want siding either, so...
Yeah, they...
So, it's not an issue, it's just an issue that we went around seven or eight times on, with everybody rewarding everybody, and I got fed up. So, it's in there now, what's in there now is the codes are fixed for three years. The other thing about disregarding the legislature, that we'll put in the next draft, and we'll make it explicit, okay? But, um, that's just something, as an example, that, that we got hung up on. But everything else, I think you guys have all seen, I can promise you, there's nothing in there that, that we haven't already done.
It's time.
Um, there's some other things I'll talk to you in executive session about, but, um, look, I mean, this, this agreement, stoplight, town entrance, new roads, new development, a hundred and thirty new houses, this is big, this is the biggest thing that ever happened this town. So, um...
I think it's good.
Is, is everybody, is everybody happy with what you, I think we got everything we wanted? Um, yeah?
That's accountable to ours, I think it's a, it's a really good thing, right? The public hasn't gotten to hear all of this, oh, you know, heard, they've heard bits and pieces, and now it's all coming to fruition, Land Plan's been talking about for, Clint how long? A decade, everybody keeps saying. So, I think it's good that we, we get some movement on it now, that we've got a lot of, lot going for us. I feel like we've got a solid list there. There's no way to say, hey, everything's gonna be perfect and dandy, but I think we've, crossed our t's and dotted our i's as much as we possibly could. And we have, I mean, we've, we've spent hours talking about this exact thing, over and over and over, and written this draft up, so I think it's a good movement.
Yeah, and we gotta get the land swap in.
That?
I agree. Yeah, we've spent a lot of time on it, so, I don't like to talk, but we have some talk.
I think it's good. Serena?
Um, no, that everyone has had a chance to talk about it and put their input in on it, you know, it's not just something we're seeing for the first time, you know, the public may be seeing the full picture for the first time for us, you know, it's been, it's been a long time, and a lot of changes and a thought has gone into it, so. Ready for it?
What?
Yeah.
You know, I think...
I think it fits what, um, I mean, what they're looking at as far as, I mean, we get to French, and we don't have a, we get to control that area out there. I think it matches our inventory, I mean, we're bookended with small and large, so I think that's a nice compromise that once in between. Um, the school was probably the only asterisk, but, I mean, you just have to cross that bridge when the school district, if the school district decides to build on their property.
Everything, if, you know, no one knows.
And I think one of the, one of the things I'm gonna, you know, exploit, uh, 'cause I'm gonna bring, I'm just now gonna come up with Mayor's letter, um, but one of the things I'm going to, uh, talk about is, I think that it is really, um, responsible on our part to look at, you know, one choice is to get impact fees and stick them in escrow bank account for the next eight or nine years before we actually expand the sewer plant or five or six years to put in the water. In the meantime, we have no entrance, no stoplight, you know, we, we don't have these improvements, no recycle water. So, I think we, we prioritize the right thing. I mean, the, this is a way to get the improvements we need right now, and we have the ability down the road to fund those other things, whereas if we have to fund seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an entryway, four turn lanes, and stoplight...
You know, that stoplight has to happen now.
It, it's, it's gonna be five or six years before we can ever even hope to fund that. Um, and we'd have all this money sitting in, in a bank account that we couldn't touch. So, I like this trade-off, I think it's smart, and, um, I, 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 I really do, I think that the, it'll be an immediate improvement to the town, immediately, um, so, I, I, I think it's, it's good on everything.
I agree. I mean, conceptually, this thing can be absolutely beautiful, you know, with, with the village as a whole, and if you, if you're gonna do it, this is the time, you got Land Plan coming in, so it makes sense.
Okay, um...
Make the motion to approve this thousand agreement, is there any measures?
Okay, Serena has made the motion.
Okay.
Matt's got the second, um, all those in favor? All right, so it is unanimous? All right. Um, that's a phenomenal thing you guys have done, this is, uh, this is gonna be really great for the town.
Just, that's got, you, you do awesome work. Wow, dealing with this, oh, you're, good God.
Uh, as somebody who was here in two thousand and seven, this has been a long time on their two thousand and six appearance when they didn't go well. So, um, outstanding. Um, okay, next up, consideration engagement of Michael Sullivan for the town entrance, that's you, Daryl.
Okay, so, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, we started talking about the entryway, and Serena and Linda and I had, uh, well, first of all, I had a meeting with, um, I've forgotten his name, the town guy?
Mitch.
Mitch. And he brought a guy named Mi- Michael Hoy along with him, and us three met up here one afternoon to talk about what we might do with the entrance way, and Michael Hoy is the construction guy, and Mitch is a supplier, obviously. And so, they recommended a guy by the name of Michael Sullivan, who Michael Hoy had worked with quite a bit over the years, to help us with the engineering and design. And so, uh, then, uh, Linda and Serena and I had a meeting, Zoom meeting with him a little while later, and relayed to him some real basic idea of what we were looking for, and then followed that up with some other, uh, documentation and so forth. And he brought back a, uh, proposal for fourteen thousand dollars for design consulting, cost analysis, uh, all that stuff, which I thought was very high of time. Uh, and so, we got another bid from the party Shelby, uh, name, remain nameless, for sixty-five thousand dollars, so suddenly fourteen thousand dollars didn't really sound so bad. So, his, uh, proposal here has four sections, and one of the things I kinda liked about it is, he did say that we can elect to accept any parts of the offer, we can do three of them, not do one of them, whatever. I think really, for the most part, we'd probably do all of them with possible exception. Fourth one I'm not too sure about, um, it's field services, I don't know if that means he's gonna be on-site to sort of observe the construction, I don't know that that's gonna be necessary, Michael Hoy is, would be, if we choose him, would be the guy to do the construction, uh, but he, he's also said that, he's estimating that as being forty hours, maybe less, maybe more, we may have him out initially or something like that. Um, I talked to him this week, told him that we were gonna be voting on this, make sure he was still ready to go. He is. I sent him my drawing of the, he asked me for surveys and some, uh, engineering things on the property and all that that we don't have.
I've got surveys for him.
Oh, do you have surveys? Well, I, I told him, um, I sent him, uh, a drawing that I did, uh, like, I went to the decaf site and looked at the aerial, and I drew in where Lakewood Village Drive would be, and I always wanna see the entrance features, and, uh, and like I said, I sent him the drawing of the intersection there, and I sent him a link to the, uh, Google Street View of where the road will go in, and I said, "It's flat as a pancake, and there ain't nothing there." 'Cause he's worried about topography and how he gets to work into that and all that, and so he sees that and he understood that, and he said, "Okay, I got it, I don't think I need any more." Well, we can send him the survey. He, he got it somehow, and he said there were two properties involved, and that's why he used the decaf, uh, overhead versus Google or whatever, 'cause he could see the, uh, property. And, uh, but I think he understands everything he needs to understand to get started. And so, as you can see in his, uh, document here, part one is design, designing the entry feature, um, uh, the, I've sent him, we went over some visual representations of what we want, and I've sent that to him, so he's gonna design low voltage lighting, multi-cheer falls, all that stuff, he's got a real good idea, I think, of what we're looking at. Uh, part two is the cost projection, that'll be, you know, a much more accurate cost projection than, you know, his off the cuff one that he gave us, so when we get to, I mean, that's what it looks like, right? When we get to the point where we're negotiating second part of this, or any more of the developer agreement, and we need to adjust any of those numbers, we should be able to do it when he completes part two.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I talked with Sam, 'cause Sam would probably do the point, and Sam had a good point. Basically, the easiest thing for us to do would be to make the pump actually, they'll use a submersible.
In the...
In the water.
In the little catch drain.
It'll be in the catch base, and that way, we don't need like an access panel, there's no, you know, you just make it a submersible. And those will run forever, he said, "That's easy, that, that solves your problem."
Um, then part three is detailed design drawings, this is what, you know, the construction guy is gonna need to, you know, go, uh, select all of the materials and so forth, um, and he'll do the design drawing, we can obviously look at those drawings as he does them, and, you know, it'll look something like this, but if we wanna tweak it, you know, one of the things Mark talked about is...
Does that picture of you original?
Yeah, that's that Rock Springs one, is we wanna have that sign up there, but we didn't want it like a rough thing. So, at that point, we can go around with the, with the design and decide, well, work on it, with him on a final design. And, uh, the only other thing probably that I should mention is that, uh, he has a professional designation of ASLA, which I had to look up, is the American Society of Landscape Architects. I did Google in, and he has worked for, uh, big companies doing their stuff, so seems legit. So, I guess we just need to decide if we wanna, um, contract with him to do this. You guys think?
Well, it looks like part four is literally just going out when they're building it, you know, a double trailer, double...
Well, yeah, I kind of interpreted it as, I... Well, yeah, I kind of interpreted it, I, I didn't get it, I said I talked to him today, we actually emailed him, he didn't get a chance to talk to him. But I kind of interpreted it as him spending some time on the construction side, making sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But I don't know that that's going to be absolutely necessary, like I said, my first meeting was actually with Michael Foy, which is going to be the guy building it. And I think once he's got the design and he understands what he needs to do, or whoever else we may use, whether we use Michael Foy or mine, um, this guy's going to have detailed drawings. Uh, we're going to have dimensions, Mark and I went to, uh, uh, a place over at Oak Point.
Emerald Sound.
Emerald Sound, do some measurements, because we were a little unsure about the width of it. Emerald Sound, you guys familiar with that?
Yeah.
It's got that big center section, which is exactly fourteen feet wide. And that's what we were talking about, ours being forty feet, we were just kind of-
On each side?
Yeah, on each side, yeah. Yeah, on each side, they only have one in the middle, but-
Yeah, they have it.
But we also measured across the whole road, there even having an out gate going, uh, right where it goes in and out is like twenty feet wide, I think, if I remember right. So, the whole thing is eight feet wide and that's kind of pretty close to what our road is going to be. So, we were able to kind of put all that together and we think that that dimension is correct. Um, so, yeah, I, I think, that's what I think is that the phase four, I don't think we're going to have to spend much.
Well, is the, uh, well, the cost of this rolled into potential protection with the impact or not?
Maybe. Um, it'll be, it'll be optional. If we're, we're going to pay this, or this is underway, then when we get down the road, it'll either be reimbursed or, or we'll, we'll figure it out.
But, I mean, the only thing we have is the one, that's the, that's what we've got, so, I mean, they-
Well, it's one of that engineering company that does things more than- I mean, actually it was from the part of that engineering company that does this kind of stuff. I mean, they, it wasn't the guy we normally deal with.
Yeah, it was true.
The division of that group.
I mean, look, so next, next meeting, I'm going to bring you a traffic study. It's kind of, the burden is on us to get these exhibits finalized. Okay, well, one of the things you've got to do is you've got to get a traffic warrant to say you're eligible to have a traffic license. So, I already have that from, from Todd, what that, what that thing costs, it's like four thousand dollars or something. But they have to stamp it, it requires an engineer certified under the text dot, blah, 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 that we warrant in, in our stoplight. So, that's on us, we've got to get that done. Because we're, that's our job, while they're doing the annexation and the swapping and, uh-
Okay, what, what's that total timeframe look like at this point? So, now we approve, right, they're going to take it over?
Six weeks.
Four, six weeks.
Maybe the annexation-